I've nominated John Ludwig for another term as Acting Justice, and he has the approval of the Board of Trustees. He will now take his oath from Justice Clark.
You all right?
Yeah, I made it.
I state your name.
I, John Ludwig.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of acting justice.
The duties of acting justice.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. I'll be out of your way in just a minute. This doesn't turn on a dime. I don't either.
Our first citizen award is the 2016 Victory Award for assistance and commitment to the village of Tivoli and our efforts to empower our youth. This year, this award goes to a gentleman who has assisted with every egg hunt, Halloween party, winter fest, in recent memory. He helped with last summer's Resurrected Tivoli Community Day, and he is perennially present for just about every festival organized in Tivoli, which are so much fun to share with the children of the village. No stranger to service, he is a long, long, long time member of the Tivoli Fire Department, Tivoli Fire Company, and its current president. But tonight, we have the pleasure of honoring him for his particular service to the young people of Tivoli. The 2015, excuse me, 2016 Victory Award goes to Tom Christie Senior. Tom Christie Senior, the village of Tivoli recognizes your perennial volunteerism, which each and every year enables the success of our egg hunts, Halloween events, winter fests, and more. Your contributions have been critical to ensuring that these happy celebrations become traditions for the young people of Tivoli and their families. Please accept this recognition on behalf of a grateful village. See why this is so fun, right? Next, we have the 2016, oh, excuse me, something important here. The next three awards are named in honor of past Tivolians who left their mark to such a degree that we named awards after them. So when we honor tonight's recipients, we are also honoring and remembering these individuals and their legacy to Tivoli. So I have here the 2016 Angelo Stefiro Award for decency for the good found in all people and the ability of some to quietly give of themselves. One of the best. Were I to enumerate the individual contributions made by our honoree to life here in Tivoli, we would be here most of the night. Here's a fraction of what this person makes happen around here. Preschool, storytime, Lego club, video game nights, math circle, science circle, board game nights, author talks, gardening and architectural lectures, coordinator over the summer reading program, coach of the Battle of the Books team, organizer and fundraiser for last Halloween's terrific Day of the Dead program attended by over 100 people and a member of the fabulous Tivoli Green Committee, where she wrote and won all of us $1,000 for some new trees. That was a grant she won. With that said, Veronica Stork, would you please approach the podium? Veronica Stork, the village of Tivoli recognizes the broad range of contributions you generously made to this community. From coordinating innumerable programs at the Tivoli Free Library, assisting with community celebrations, to service on the Tivoli Green Committee, including writing and winning our New York State Urban Forestry Council Grant. The hours you spend for the good of this village were both humble and inspiring. Please accept this recognition on behalf of a grateful village. The next award is the Alan T. Covert Character Award. Dedicated individuals believe it is their responsibility to assist community leaders and residents to always make that community a better place. In addition to having been a co-coordinator of our beautiful Tivoli Community Garden, our next honoree took over the chair of the Tivoli Green Committee one year ago. I knew then that this individual would be excellent in the role for her leadership and management skills, her professional experience, and her passion for the health of the environment. But what she has accomplished with the committee this year has exceeded even my high expectations of her tenure at the helm. In the last year, the Tivoli Green Committee has completed a full streetlight assessment of the village, preparing us for consideration of energy and cost-saving LED streetlights. The Green Committee oversaw the planting of 1,500 perennial flowers and four new trees in Tivoli. They also won, as I mentioned a moment ago, the New York State Urban Forestry Grant, which will get us about eight or 10 new trees this fall. The Green Committee helped the Board of Trustees identify and pass the New York State Unified Solar Permit, which simplifies the permitting process for residents who wish to install solar, and lent the support of Tivoli to the Solarize Northern Duchess campaign. Many of you attended that successful Solarize workshop right here in this room on April 2nd. It was really, really great. Upcoming, the Green Committee, partnering with the library, will be holding an Arbor Days celebration outside this building on April 30th. In fact, the Green Committee has worked up so many projects and gotten so busy that tonight, the Board of Trustees will be establishing a new tree committee to exclusively handle the tree projects. Under this individual's leadership, the Green Committee grew and grew and sprouted a subcommittee. One more marker for a successful tenure at the chair is that the Green Committee has more members than it did a year ago. I asked one of them the other day to tell me, you know, what it was like to serve on the board under this individual and, you know, what it was like. And, you know, I knew I wanted to give her the award, but why should I give her the award? The reply was, quote, "Her general awesomeness", so for these reasons, it is my great pleasure to present the 2016 Alan T. Covert Award to Mara Randville. Mara Randville, the village of Tivoli recognizes your dynamic and accomplished leadership with the Tivoli Green Committee. The thorough and ardent approach you bring to each project you undertake has resulted in some of the best things that happened in our village this year. You have challenged and inspired your fellow committee members and residents to embrace the volunteer spirit and get good things done for Tivoli. Please accept this recognition on behalf of a grateful village. Last award has an august title indeed. The James Star Clark Citizen of the Year. A community is only as great as those who give exemplary service. James Star Clark, whose picture hangs on the wall yonder by the coffee there, oval frame, had a long career as rector of the Trinity Church on North Road. He was founder of the Trinity Academy, and he was the first mayor of the village of Tivoli when it was incorporated in 1872. And he served one term, should go along. Tonight's Citizen of the Year should really be recognized for a lifetime of meaningful involvement with this community. President of the Red Church and Cemetery for over 30 years. An active member of the Tivoli Free School Alumni Association. And of course, the school closed not a couple of years ago. Careful custodian of the school bell, since it was removed from the schoolhouse bell free, and leader of the effort this year to see that historic bell placed outside this building for all to enjoy. A regular participant in hooks, needles, yarns, and threads. A big help in putting on Tivoli Community Day last year. The historic artifacts presented by our honoree at Community Day did much to remind us of the village's rich past. In addition to all this, and in my opinion, even more than all this, it was a constructive tone taken and the wise words spoken by our honoree at the July 8th Noise and Nuisance Gathering Legislation Public Hearing and at the Student Pizza Forum of September 10th, which demand recognition. In the midst of one of the most challenging, controversial, and critical community conversations to transpire in Tivoli in recent years, our honoree spoke eloquently with respect, humor, and pride in Tivoli. She invited newer residents to pay attention to what's here and what has been here, and to try and understand why those who have lived here a long time care so much about our sweet little village. She encouraged all of us to come together, young and old, newcomer, old timer, in a common appreciation of Tivoli's past and through learning about it, come to respect Tivoli's present and become invested in building Tivoli's future. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my great pleasure to announce our Citizen of the Year, Jackie Zeko. Jackie Zeko, the village of Tivoli recognizes your abiding and contagious pride in the rich history of this community and years of effort dedicated to its preservation. From your work at the Red Church to preserving and showcasing the handsome bell from the Tivoli Free School, you have ensured that all of us can stay connected to our historic resources and draw upon them for inspiration as we face the challenges of the present. Please accept this recognition on behalf of a grateful village. And Jackie, do you like Santa Claus? Okay, you don't have to clap. You can't leave yet. I've got something else to talk about.
Tuesday, we're going to clean the bell.
Seven o'clock, there you go. Now, there is nothing like giving someone an award, especially Citizen of the Year, to make them double down on their service to the village. And so I want to announce that Jackie will be serving as the chairperson of a new committee here in the village. The Committee for the Preservation and Promotion of Village History. That committee has one person on it now and is looking for new members. There are a fun list of projects, including the ribbon cutting event for the bell, which will be June 4th.
Resettled.
Resettled, we get it cleaned. Uncovering and showcasing the date stone at the Trinity School up on North Road and working with the Harris Smith Post to restore the World War II monument on Monument Hill, which is in bad need of some restoration. So if you have an interest in joining this committee, if you want to help show off Tivoli's historic resources and help Jackie get many of these great ideas executed, please get in touch with me and we will throw you right on that committee.
It would be very interesting. I'd like to have some of our college students come out and give us a hand too. It'd be nice for them to find out all what went on in Tivoli. So we all open a hand to whoever would like to help us.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. We have one last recognition, special recognition, before you have to sit through my mayoral address. Justice Clark, would you please join me at the podium? Parker Malinsky, would you please come on up here? The village of Tivoli wishes to recognize Barbara Malinsky, who has just retired for many years as the village court clerk. I can say, as a mayor and as a resident, who has paid his occasional snow ordinance ticket and works up in the Tivoli courtroom, Barbara is the consummate professional. We will certainly miss seeing you in the office, but we will see you around the village. And as a small token of the great esteem and appreciation we hold for you and your service to Tivoli, Justice Clark and I have deemed it fitting to dedicate the courtroom desk in your honor. This plaque will be placed upon the desk where you worked for so many years. Well, it's the newer desk, right?
That I got the grand four.
Dedicated to Court Clerk Barbara Malinsky for many years of outstanding service to the village of Tivoli, April 20th, 2016.
Thank you for many late night arrangements. No other court clerk in the state of New York does that. Thank you, along with my loving wife Nancy, keeping me on time, mostly. And pretty much where I'm supposed to be. You will be missed, and I certainly hope that you have told, oh, what the heck she's in for. And that's the first time I ever saw her in my life.
Thank you and congratulations to all our officials and honorees. It is people like them and their example of serving the rest of us that makes this village thrive in the little world of Tivoli turn. The good year Tivoli has had would not have been possible without the hard work and dedication of many, many people. Thank you to all the village staff. Superintendent Jim Simmons. And our gentleman from the DPW. Remember when he was late to the holiday party because he was fixing a water main break? It was cold. Attorney Christine Schell, thank you. Our engineer Crawford and Associates. Thank you, thank you, thank you to the members of the Planning and Zoning Boards, the Waterfront Committee, the Green Committee, and the Zoning Review Committee. These people do a lot of heavy lifting around here, and they do it on a purely volunteer basis. The generosity of their time and expertise must always be appreciated, and it doesn't get said enough. My deep and abiding gratitude to my colleagues on the Village Board of Trustees for your wisdom, your energy, and your sound judgment. As we work together to move Tivoli forward, it is truly a pleasure working with the three of you. Which brings me to another concern. Three trustees? We're supposed to have four trustees. There are four seats on the board, plus the mayor, that guy. And one has been vacant. One seat has been vacant since Robin Bruno stepped down to become our new village clerk. A midterm vacancy on the board is filled by mayoral appointment and not subject to board approval. In the last four months, while the board carried on a lot of business, sometimes struggling to make a quorum, I'm so sorry, I have interviewed at least six Tivolians. Very promising, not as gullible as I had hoped, but ultimately, each one, for one reason or another, declined. We have a little joke on the village board. You have to be smart enough to do it, and you have to be dumb enough to do it. But I'm pleased to say that at next month's board meeting, our empty chair will be filled by a new trustee. And you all have to live here in suspense. This is just some mayoral theater. I'm not going to tell you who it is tonight. Please don't change your minds. But we will have a fabulous fifth member of the board very soon, and he will make a fine trustee. I want to say a special, special thank you to my colleague, collaborator, and friend, Robin Bruno. You have done so much in the few short months since you dove, quite literally, into the sea of duties carried out by the village clerk. And I know I am not the only one floored by your hard work, dedication, kindness, and humor. Working with you has been amazing, and I am actually excited about everything we have to do tomorrow morning and in the weeks in most of them. The village is very lucky to have you in the office of clerk, and we are so lucky to have you in that office downstairs. Now, to indulge me, I appreciate the opportunity to share a few thoughts on Tivoli. My fellow Tivolians, thank you, each and every one of you, for being here tonight. We gather as a community of neighbors, colleagues, and friends to celebrate Tivoli. Further, tonight we take stock of where we have been, where we are, and where we are headed. The village of Tivoli has traveled very far in these past 12 months. We have achieved much, and we have positioned both the village government and the Tivoli community for a better year ahead. I'm very pleased to be able to tell you this tonight because a healthy momentum, such as is now underway in the village of Tivoli, is by no means guaranteed for any community. It takes vision, will, courage, a lot of hard work. There may be obstacles, challenges, and obstructions for a village, like an individual, which would pressure us to stop, to yield, to shrink from that which is difficult, controversial, or frightening. Pressures like these tempt individuals and communities alike to withdraw, to look, to wait, to wait for that easy way out, which may never come. This speech is historically billed as the State of the Village Address. Got stuck on that word "state". Doesn't really feel like Tivoli to me. "State" got me on this weird chain of thoughts. "State", "static", "stuck". Now, I don't think it would surprise anyone in this room when I point out that unfortunately, in a number of areas, big and small, Tivoli has been stuck. Sometimes badly in recent years. Stuck about how to face a 78-year-old water and sewer system and think about how will that ever get dealt with. Stuck about how day-to-day operations transpire within this very building. Stuck about ever tightening budgets and how to afford services and maintain assets. Stuck thinking there was no money, and we couldn't fix anything, and we couldn't take care of anything. Stuck thinking village hall can't help, and it's really not that much fun to go up there anyway. Stuck about how can this historic residential village maintain its character, quality of life, and self-respect three miles from a large and growing institution whose burdens on Tivoli had come to rival and unfortunately, at times outweigh its benefits to Tivoli? Even in our one-square-mile village, small place, many of us have been stuck in our little tribes. Students, townies, newcomers, old timers. Even in a population of only 1,100 people, we have been stuck in small and ultimately silly factions. Why are they silly? Because everybody here loves Tivoli. We love the same place for the same reasons, and that's why it's kind of silly. We have been stuck thinking that the road will continue to crumble. Stuck thinking that that park will never get built. Stuck thinking that the noise would always disturb our nights. Stuck thinking that the beer bottles and garbage would always be there in the morning. It is quite understandable that this community came to feel that way because frankly, it had gotten that way. So I'm truly pleased to tell you that when I look back at Tivoli's year that we just had, I don't see a story about a state of static-stuck anymore. Not on any of it. While all these challenges are still present to a greater or lesser degree, Tivoli has made progress on each. And if we continue on our present course, these problems will be addressed, ameliorated, and many solved. The story of this year in Tivoli is the story of a community becoming unstuck. A community beginning to break free from the grip of its past problems, starting to move and stretch its limbs and reach towards its aspirations. And why not? It's just more fun. So what was different this year? Many things. And the biggest pain of this speech is that you can't put in everything you'd like to. But here are some highlights. The village Board of Trustees went straight at the big problems. We researched, drafted, and passed the Noise and Nuisance Gathering Laws, which affected an almost incredible, which affected an incredible and almost instantaneous reduction in the late-night Dionysian disturbances, which tore at Tivoli's quality of life for far too long. By all accounts, the situation in Tivoli this past year has been better than any in the past decade. There were years when it seemed this would never improve, but we got it unstuck. This did not happen by accident. It happened because the board took courageous action in the face of longstanding misconceptions and controversy. And now that proper, reasonable, healthy dynamic has been established for Tivoli and its student residents and student visitors, all manner of positive possibilities are opening up. For example, I am working with a very bright student by the name of Zava Candler to update and approve Tivoli's Renters Handbook to help students understand the important differences between living on a campus and living in a village. Deputy Mayor Major is working with Bard intern, Willa Field, on updating a survey of Tivoli's historic resources last done in 1978 for what is now the Hudson River National Historic District. Students recently participated in the fabulous Tivoli's Got Talent Show. How many people want to see that every year? We have student residents planting in the plot next to half-century residents in the plot adjacent in our community garden. These kind of constructive, integrated, community-building engagements characterize the future of town-gown relations. It should be, and it will be, a positive thing for Tivoli to be situated three miles from a fabulous college and have many students in our community. I invite my fellow Bardies to join our efforts to make this village a better place for all of us. Help us build, help us create. And when you celebrate, all that we ever ask is that you do it in a manner that is mindful and respectful of your fellow residents in the village of Tivoli. It has been happening this year, and it has become, and it will remain, the new normal for Tivoli. Then we went at another big problem. The village board was dissatisfied with the designated village engineer inherited from a previous administration. We had to get that unstuck, and we did. Tivoli deserves the best, and no vendor or consultant should take the Tivoli account for granted. Consultants and contractors should be fighting to get our business. So we drafted and disseminated a request for proposals last August. Nineteen engineering firms attended the first Get to Know Tivoli meeting. Thirteen submitted proposals to become our new engineer. We interviewed the four best, and we picked the very best. And the village of Tivoli is thrilled to once again be working with Crawford and Associates. Even as we hired them, more things became unstuck. They have already written in one for us two grants, totaling $170,000, and we are still waiting to hear about a third. They have identified savings of $3,000 a year related to the frequency of the monitoring of landfill, for which we are responsible over our frequent leaving. They've helped us protect our wells. I don't know how many of you know about the beaver population. We have the Woodmark wells out there, but we got that taken care of with the help of Crawford and Associates. And they've advanced long-stalled projects like the Desire Crosswalk in front of this building and the walkway down to the river. Both will soon have completed plans ready to be built. Let's talk about in-house, big improvements. We have restructured the positions in the clerk's office. Refocusing duties, spreading responsibility, reducing hours, and saving money at the same time. Our new structure consists of a full-time clerk, a part-time deputy clerk responsible for supporting the planning and zoning boards, and a part-time treasurer. And the best part is we have great new people in these positions. Robin, Kristen, Bonnie, and Theo bring new personalities and fresh approaches day-to-day operations of this village government. We take you into a small but important arena of Tivoli where we were stuck, and you never thought of it. Village procurement policy. Our DPW and fire department struggle with a procurement policy that made obtaining even small necessary parts and equipment onerous and frustrating. In August, the board rewrote that document, making it clear, effective, and useful for village purchasers while still ensuring competitive bidding and good value for the village taxpayers. Ask the DPW or fire department, their headaches have lessened. Still a couple, right? Much better, I hope. We are also into a series of wonderful renovations on our handsome historic village hall. We started with the most critical asset, the bathroom. It has a new floor, patched and painted walls, the toilet no longer leaks, and there is now a diaper-changing table. Upcoming will be the front steps and rails, repairing and repainting the clerk's office and the courtroom. We will take care of this beautiful building and ensure that it remains a proud setting for the business of this village. Interior repairs were made at the firehouse, and very soon outside of the building and bay floors will be repainted. You know from your own homes that when it comes to maintenance, a stitch in time saves time. You put it off, it costs you more. The village must and has been starting to take care of its buildings, vehicles, and other assets. Yes, DPW, the air compressor is fixed, and the new sand blaster is ready to go. Ralph is excited. You know another place where we've been stuck, I mean frozen for a long time? Village of Tivoli website. Well, only for three or four more weeks. The village board took that one on too. In early winter, we solicited proposals from four firms, and next month, we will unveil a new, clean, elegant, user-friendly website which is actually going to cost us about $1,000 less a year. Which is a nice segue into finances. Briefly, a lot of good news this year. Due to efficiencies and economies, including reduced police needs thanks to our new laws, a new elevator service contract, a new website, reduction in the required frequency of landfill monitoring, restructuring of village positions, elimination of unused phones, and the ending of certain debt obligations, the village has, for the first time in a very long time, a little breathing room. We can actually commit funds to a few aspirational expenditures. We will use this fiscal breathing room to make long-postponed repairs to our assets, leverage grant monies, and make much-needed updates to outdated sections of our village code. We can do all this, once again, while staying, once again, under the tax cap. This year is almost like, what's the point? The tax cap for us was 0.012%, which in Tivoli means raising the total taxes by $540 or less than 50 cents for each resident. Later this evening, the board will vote to adopt the 2017 budget, and I think my colleagues will agree, because of this breathing room, we are gratified to be able to put resources where Tivoli needs them. After years of cutting to the bone, this year, we have a very lean, very fit, but not skeletal budget. About the aesthetics and upkeep of our village. We have worked hard, and believe me, I personally pestered our former mayor, county executive, he was gonna do it anyway, but I think it happened a little sooner. Broadway finally got repaved. Long-desired striking got done at the firehouse. We have new speed signs around the village and one-way street signs, excuse me, and one-way markings off-road. We replaced and straightened streetlights, planted flowers and trees, painted curbs, and parking lots. We have a lot more to do in this realm. Property maintenance, garbage cans that live on the sidewalks all week. That's gonna go away this year, so we got the potholes that never stop popping up. But we have begun, and we will continue, and these things too will improve. It does take time. We've got more trees and flowers going in this year, and big improvements on Pine Street coming in the fall. I would go on and on, but I think at this point, I have conveyed to you the new spirit that is moving in our village. Dignity and pride in Tivoli are returning. We are choosing to make the village better regardless of past frustrations, tight funds, or daunting challenges. Things always take twice as long as one would like, sometimes three or four times as long as one would like. And there's certainly much more to do and further to go, but we are well begun, and that is half-done. The hardest part is over, to correct our thinking, to reset our morale, to make a mental break with the ruts and routines of the past, to get our heads up and out of the muck and look towards a brighter future. I think that now we have our eyes on prize, and if we keep going as we are each year, we will come closer and closer. Sadly, I must now turn for a few minutes from all this rah-rah, Tivoli can do it cheerleading. I need to speak to you on a sobering and difficult topic, critical to everyone in Tivoli. Do you remember the first stuck on my list? Seventy-eight-year-old water and sewer systems. The great reckoning for this village is at hand. In a couple weeks, the nine-month evaluation of our systems will be completed and available. I have seen incomplete drafts, and these documents will be large, comprehensive, and full of a lot of difficult, difficult, and painful information. Bad news. Our systems, like many in the state and nation, are old and crumbling. We in Tivoli have known this for a long time. In early June, the exact date is yet to be determined. May be right after we cut the ribbon on the belt. The exact date is yet to be determined, but I promise you, everyone is gonna know when these meetings happen. We want you there. We will begin to sort through these reports and understand the painful facts of this village's situation. We will have engineers here to explain technical information and help us understand our choices. All that is wrong, broken, outdated in both systems will be there in black and white. Estimates of what water and sewer rates would need to be to have healthy and sustainable systems will be in these reports. It is going to be, I said it already, very, very painful. Sticker shot, beyond. But ignoring these facts will no longer be an option for Tivoli's government or its residents. There is no easy way out, and this village needs to get out. Once we have soberly faced and ingested the facts about where we are, we will proceed to the big question. Who is going to get all this fixed, and how will it be done? There are two hard options. Option one, Tivoli maintains ownership. And this mayor, and this village board, and our successors, hopefully with all your support and help, tackle this colossal, decades-long jumble of complicated and expensive tasks. In that scenario, the rates will go up. Option two, ownership of the systems is transferred to the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, a public benefit corporation created by New York State at the request of Dutchess County back in 1991. The DCWWA operates and maintains water and wastewater systems. It is their sole purpose and activity. You will be learning all about them before any of us are making any decisions. But in scenario two, the rates will go up. There is no getting away from this anymore. So, at the risk of bringing everybody down this evening, an evening of celebration, I had to tell you about this looming choice. It's my job. It's part of my job to bring you bad news when there's bad news to be told. I have to bring it to you full, and I have to bring it to you straight. I will always do that. When the big choice facing Tivoli comes along, I want all of you here to make that choice with us. We on the village board have the same water coming into our homes, and we pay the same bills. We are all in the same boat, and we must prepare ourselves to face facts and choose the best course forward, difficult, though all the options may be. The village board cannot and does not want to make that choice without you, and you don't want us to make it without you. How important is it? How important is it that our wastewater is treated in an environmentally responsible and sustainable manner? It has to be. How important is it that we have clean, safe, dependable drinking water? You gotta have that. Both of these things are important. They are more important than the noise, the potholes, and the garbage. They are more important than the flowers, the trees, and the festivals. They are more critical and more difficult than these things, but we will deal with them in the same way. Together, as a community, bound by common interests and our shared future, we have to deal with them, and we are about to deal with them at long last. Conversation begins early June. Sometimes, as in this issue, becoming unstuck is a scary experience, but one must move. One cannot remain in the crumbling status quo as it continues. It's an actual deterioration. Where we are and where we have been is not an option. I hope you'll agree with me. So, if you haven't gotten it by now, the theme of this little speech was getting a little bigger, is that Tivoli has entered a new time. It is a new chapter in our long history where things are possible again, where none of our problems, big or small, is intractable. We are not stuck. Tivoli is the active, able, ambitious author of its own future. We know the future we wish to write. A proud, dignified village which preserves its history and quality of life. A vibrant village, an arts and culture village known for its events and festivals, its dance center, theater, and art gallery. A thriving village where restaurants are full, the business is busy, and the public space is beautified and populated with people enjoying themselves. A diverse village where old timers, newcomers, students, laborers, cooks, chefs, servers, painters, planners, professors, firefighters, bakers, barkeepers, doctors, dentists, grandparents' parents, and their children understand that they are all Tivolians, and as such, all respect and appreciate and help each other. A village where parents want to raise their children. A village where retirees want to retire. A village that children find safe, stimulating, and a fun place to grow up. We know the place Tivoli is and the direction we want to see it go. We have written the opening pages this year. Let's continue the story. Because this year, Tivoli stood up, took a deep, refreshing breath, and embarked on a journey which will continue in the coming year and the years beyond. I'd like to close with one more accomplishment that occurred this year that we should all feel very good about. Let's recall that we have been stuck without a Tivoli Community Day for four years. Well, we're not stuck anymore. Tivoli Day 2015 was a smashing success, and this year will be a repeat. Mark your calendars, August 6th. So many people and groups participated, so many old friends got a chance to reconnect, and so many new friendships were begun. And that's why we have, and will always have, Tivoli Community Day. To bring us closer together, to help keep us close together, to build the unity that is required to tackle our challenges, to build up this village, and it's just nice to come together and celebrate Tivoli together. And if you want to see unity, if you want to see the Tivoli spirit, you need look no further than this. Look at it, it's Tivoli. It's us, those people are having fun. That's what Tivoli is, that's the Tivoli we are and should be. A community where everybody is in the picture. We are a unique and wonderful village. This is an authentic community. Tivoli will be as good as we choose to make it. Let's work hard, let's work together, let's have a good year. I know we are up to it. Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. That concludes the ceremonial celebratory portion of our reorder. We will now break for about twenty minutes for some refreshments, have a nice look at the photo. Those who wish to slip quietly away and not stay for the down-and-dirty, nitty-gritty regular board meeting, which will start in twenty minutes with nine thrilling items on the agenda. You can make your exits. But seriously, thank you all very much for coming tonight. Thank you for caring about Tivoli. Let's have a seat. Nice photo, Pete.
The board of trustees will return to order. And we will begin with a village clerk's report. Clerk Bruno. No.
Payroll for process. Attentive zoning, four fields, special meeting, public hearing for the planning board, a public hearing for resources for fields, one planning board workshop.
How many?
Four, sixty-three.
Five hundred and sixty-three.
Oh, good. Good, I like it when it's over at five hundred.
Okay. Trustees, you will see we have three sets of minutes in your binders. We have March 16th workshop, at which the tentative board was presented, the tentative budget was presented to the board. We have the regular board meeting on March 16th. And the public hearing on the tentative budget of April 13th. Oh, and it's March 29th, there's March? March 29th workshop. Okay. We'll approve these together. Is there a motion to approve all three sets of minutes?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That was moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by trustee Esrati. Schedule of upcoming events. June 4th bell, tentatively, and April 30th Arbor Day. Treasurers' report. I see, thank you. Out of the A fund, we spent $50,787.55. Out of the F fund, $3,562.19. And out of the G fund, $2,098, for a total of $56,350.72. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The report is accepted. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
That was Schneider followed by Major. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We will pay the bills. Trustee Esrati, zoning report.
Very sorry, Mr. Mayor, but the code enforcement officer did not provide a great practice.
Okay, let that be noted in a minute. Public comment on agenda items only, and I want to let everyone know that we're gonna move regular business number six up to the top so we don't keep Michelle Gregg here any longer than we need to. So we have two members of the public. Any comments on the agenda items before we move through them? Bless you. You good, Tom? All right, seeing none, we're gonna move on to regular business number one, adoption of the reorganizational packet. Is there a motion to adopt the packet?
I move.
All in, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I actually have one question. I noted that under the list of responsibilities here outlined by trustees, that the Tivoli Business and Artists Association is still listed.
Okay, that should be struck out of there.
That should be stricken, right.
Got that, Robyn? And incidentally, trustees, these responsibilities will probably be reshuffled next month when we have a new trustee, so this is sort of a holding. All right, so we're gonna strike Tivoli Business and Art Association from this blueprint. With that said, we had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the blueprint is adopted, and now we'll go right to number six. Authorizing of solar guidelines, but needs to be preceded by a few things that Michelle will tell us about.
Yeah, so at your last meeting, you opened a secret that you haven't actually concluded yet. So the first step is, you will remember that you asked the planning board to prepare a draft local waterfront revitalization consistency determination form, which they sent to you, and now I put it into your form. And anytime you take an action, because almost the entire village, I think, is in the L W, yeah, is in the L W N R T, anytime you take an action, you have to review that action for consistency with the policies of the local waterfront revitalization program. And that's what this document is. This table lists all of the policies, and the planning board has, you know, reviewed it in a draft form through. Almost everything is non-applicable because you're not proposing, there's no development involved, there's no land disturbance, you know, and it's not even a zoning law, it's really just a set of guidelines. So the only item that has really been noticed, you know, where there's really a comment, is on page three under historic resources, and it's just noted that the proposal is consistent with the historic resource policies because, of course, it's intended to protect historic resources. So we have some discussion there about how the intent of the action is to minimize impact of solar installations on the historic scenic resources of the Hudson River National Historic Landmark District, the state's district scenic area, state line significance, and the Mid-Hudson Historic Shoreland Scenic District. So that's really the only one where there's any applicability, and it's been noted as being applicable. I'm sorry, it's- applicable, I'm sorry, as being consistent with that policy. So the first thing for you to do is to, if you have a chance to review it, would be to adopt this...
I move that we adopt the recommendation from the planning board that the consistence, that the solar guidelines are consistent with the LWRP.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next step is to actually conclude Seeker, and so I sent you previously a part two EAF. I've only brought tonight the sheet, I know you've reviewed this previously, the sheet that identifies that there is only one potential impact. Again, it's for historic and archaeological resources, and again, it's a beneficial impact because the intent of the guidelines is to protect those resources. So that's the only potential impact that's identified in the part two. The part three discusses that potential impact, and actually the language of the part three is the same as in negative declaration. So if you wanted to just look at the reasons supporting the determination in the neg dec, you'll see the same language as is included in the part three. And I think you probably already had a chance to review this, but again, it's saying that there are beneficial impacts in protecting historic resources in National Historic Landmark District. There are no impacts to archaeology because there's no development proposed, so there's no land disturbance. And if anybody were to propose any action that was going to require in land disturbance, if it was conducted under Seeker, there would be an archaeological study conducted at that time. So there are no significant adverse environmental impacts as a result of the action. And I think I said this to you previously, so you probably haven't seen it through all right.
And so now we adopt the negative declaration?
And we actually have a resolution in your packet which combines the adoption of the negative declaration with the approval of the guidelines, so if you want to turn that and take that action.
This follows the parking lease, Seeker.
That's right after the parking lease, it looks like?
Yeah.
Looks like it's after the photo of the parking lot.
Yeah, we're taking it a little ahead of the...
Yep.
It says updating solar guidelines.
Okay.
And I guess the date should be, that was set up for another date, so that date should be the 20th.
Yes, it was originally slated for the 13th.
So we need to change this date from the 13th to 20th?
Right.
Is there a motion to adopt resolution number, do we have a number, Clerk Brown?
Number eight.
Authorizing solar guidelines for the Village of Tivoli, Dutchess County, New York.
So moved.
That was made by Trustee Schneider and seconded by Trustee Ezroti. Is there any discussion? Just want to thank the Deputy Mayor for getting so interested in this.
My pleasure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Can you put all this, this blurb in the minutes?
Yeah, if you copy and give it to Robin or just, you know, show it to Robin, it'll go in the minutes.
I think Robin has copied the packet. Is that what you're copying there?
Yeah, the bottom of part three, if that could all go into the minutes.
All of that should be, you know, right, part of the minutes.
Actually, attached to the minutes, the entire document.
Okay, very good. Moving on. Resolution relating to annual reorganization, reorganization. This has mileage reimbursement rates, check signing, official newspapers, meeting schedule, et cetera. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution relating to annual reorganization?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
We have to do this, exactly, we have to do it by...
A roll call?
Roll call.
All right. Deputy Mayor, Major.
Aye.
Trustee Ezroti.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
And I also vote aye.
So that's resolution number nine.
Clerk, were you able to get the motion and second on that one?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Resolution number 10, relating to the re-adoption of the Code of Ethics. We'll do a, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
That's Trustee Schneider, is there a second?
Second.
Deputy Mayor, Major. A roll call vote, Deputy Mayor? Trustee Ezroti?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. All right, moving on to resolution of proposed budget modifications. So we're getting towards the end of the fiscal year here, and we discussed this at our workshop last week, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so they haven't changed since then. Is there a motion to adopt these budget modifications?
So moved.
That was motion by the Deputy Mayor, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Schneider, any discussion?
Is the reason that the decrease is less than the increase, the two, five, six, five, that we thought was going into revenues, which is not going into revenues?
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. So the reason the decrease and increase are different is because we learned that two insurance claims related to the jaws of life and the doors, that revenue was recovered from the insurance claims, but never expressed anywhere as an expenditure. So we're putting that in the fire department line as we had discussed at the meeting with you gentlemen. So, sorry, did we do motions yet?
I think we did.
Did we do motions already?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Budget mods are adopted. All right. Resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between the Village of Tivoli and the Monumental Lodge 374, pre and adopted masons for the lease of certain real property for a parking area. They have increased this this year by fifty dollars. So we are up to thirteen fifty a year to be able to use their lot as a municipal lot. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made by Trustee Ezroti, seconded by Trustee Schneider, is there any discussion? Roll call vote. Deputy Mayor, Major.
Aye.
Trustee Ezroti.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Moving on, we did the solar guidelines. We are at Department of State Waterfront Grant Contract. Resolution for authority to execute grant contract in connection with the New York State Department of State Waterfront Grant. We've talked about this many times. This is so that we can have a water park master plan revision and a bulkhead shoreline stabilization projects designed. There is no construction to be in the scope of this grant, and of course, as we've said several times, the important thing is that we've got a 50% match. So the Village of Tivoli will be responsible for twenty-five thousand dollars worth of in-kind services or cash, or et cetera, so. With that said, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Basically, this one gives us the first step on the waterfront in terms of designing how the shoreline will be stabilized.
Yeah, stabilizing the shoreline and preventing further erosion. Deputy Mayor, Major.
Aye.
Trustee Ezroti?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Resolution passes. Resolution establishing unpaid water sewer rent liens. Whereas the Village Board of Trustees requires a fee for the use of villages' water sewer systems, and whereas the following individuals have not paid the required fees, see attached list, the total amount is eleven thousand, nine hundred, ninety dollars and eighty-six cents. Therefore, let it be resolved that the above amount and attached listing will be established as official tax liens on the 2016 tax statements. Is there a motion to establish these liens?
I move.
That was the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Ezroti, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution passes.
What's the total of that this year? Two thousand, twenty-five hundred, something like that.
We don't know.
The total of the liens?
Yeah.
Eleven thousand? Is that higher or lower than other years?
That seems very high, yeah.
Eleven thousand, nine hundred, ninety dollars, eighty-six cents.
All right, which number of resolution are we at now?
Fifteen.
Relating to adoption of the budget. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Tivoli hereby adopts the tentative budget as revised for the 2016-2017 fiscal year for the Village of Tivoli. Is there a motion to adopt this budget?
So moved.
Motion was made by Trustee Schneider, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Deputy Mayor, is there any discussion?
I think it's just was very refreshing process to go through this and going to stay under this tax cap and be able to set aside some funds for actual maintenance repairs of our equipment and buildings, and it's a good budget.
It's a good budget. There's actually a little bit of, as I said, aspirational funds. You know, we put more into zoning for some of our updates. Or any attorney line, just in case.
The part of this process that was very reassuring to me was that we have learned that our fund balance, so the amount of money that we can go to in the event of an emergency or catastrophe of some kind, is 25% of our tax revenues.
It's about $200,000.
Which puts us in a very good place relative to other villages in New York State, especially villages of ours. So that felt good, too.
Okay, the resolution is on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The budget is adopted. The next board meeting will be Wednesday, May 18th at 7:00 PM, preceded by a workshop at 6:00 PM here at the Historic Watts de Peister Hall. There will be a regular workshop on May 11th at 7:00 PM. And Clerk Bruno, do we have, the school board is coming that night, I believe, to present to us.
Your workshop.
Yeah, on the 11th, right, so. It's always fun to have them come. Moving on to trustee reports, Trustee Ezroti, please.
Do we have a signed portion on the low sap?
Yeah, I guess they get it.
Okay.
I already have been posting and stuff, it's just I got to drop it off. I've been out of town with Phil's and last two weeks, I've got to do it for my...
Okay, well, I think we might be, we might be closest time to time if we do it.
We'll get a team tomorrow.
We'll do it probably for the next budget, but good. That's the total of about eighteen or nineteen thousand dollars.
Eighteen people who lay the points.
Yeah.
Everybody.
That will go into the length of service award program that people get payouts from when they reach 65. Planning and zoning departments have been very busy. We were so busy that on the 4th of April, we had the planning board meeting in the Red Hook Town Hall on the zoning board here. And the zoning board, I think, had four applicants. And the planning board, among the activities that are coming up are a wine bar, wine and tapas bars that the planning board approved to go into the former Murray's building. A very nice couple from Red Hook who have a son who's a soccer player for Red Hook High School, and they plan to have it, they said it's like having tea later in the day. It's going to be very quiet and understated, but a fun place to go. We also had, well, the one that the planning board was considering in the town of Red Hook was a lot line readjustment that was right on the town village line for the swimming property on Route 9G. We also have a property that hasn't been totally resolved because the weather kept us from doing the walk-by, but there's a property up on Route 9G that is asking for a variance to enable them to put an apartment into a property that used to be the deli on 9G. So it's a house, not changing the footprint of the house or anything. And with that came an interesting discussion of our attempt to change the way parking is done up there and barrier landscaping, which is a part of a larger vision to make that a little bit more, make a space for pedestrians to walk along Route 9G without being on the highway, and to do, to create that barrier partly by landscaping. So it's been a busy month for those two boards, and they've been working hard and learning a lot. Fire Department, Joel and I had a meeting with them with respect to the budget, and that I thought was a very productive meeting. We talked about the new method of, I'm losing my word there.
Procurement.
Procurement and how that was working out. Tried to get them to spend their money for this budget in a prudent but helpful way so that they can have more money to use for next year. And we also talked about longer-term capital projects and wish lists. So that was good to get us thinking ahead. And water and sewer, you've gotten the lowdown from Joel on that, I don't think there's any more to say.
Yeah. Thank you. Trustee Schneider?
I am going to go ahead and start with the Village of Tivoli Justice Court Report. The charge volume summary for the period from March 1st through March 31st, 2016. Charges received, total thirty-two. Charges disposed, total thirty. And the total money collected and remitted to the state, excuse me, state comptroller equal to 1,502 dollars and 51 cents. I am going to just revisit something that you alluded to earlier in your State of the Village address there. One of the benefits of passing those noise ordinance laws was not only saving money in that policing line, but being able to be a little choosier about when we're putting those patrols on. So I know that we've gotten feedback about violations that aren't necessarily being caught because we don't have a patrol on at a particular time that those are occurring with the most frequency, speeding, rolling stops, and the like. And I just wanted to point out that in looking over this, you know, even the overnight parking, so maybe things that weren't getting as much attention before, an extra side benefit to our work earlier this year is that we're able to refocus some of those efforts to do a better job universally policing for all those issues.
There have been a number of speeding tickets written the last two weeks.
Absolutely, and I think that will continue to see that reflected.
Deputy Mayor, Major.
Well, as always, lots going on at the library. The Bard Orchestra Now is starting a series in collaboration with the Tivoli Free Library, and it's a, the first is a chamber music concert highlighting fantasy fiction, both musically and literally, through a performance of Benjamin Britten's Fantasy for Oboe and String Trio. This project aims at engaging the imaginations of both adults and children while advertising the library's own content in an evening performance ambiance. That is Thursday, April 28th at 7:00. Friday, April 29th from 10:00 to 2:00. Assemblyman Kevin Cahill is going to have office hours at the library. Apparently, his staff is going around the local libraries to meet constituents and, you know, answer any questions. So that's Friday, April 29th from 10:00 to 2:00. Are you talking about Arbor Day?
Why don't you talk about Arbor Day?
I will talk about Arbor Day. Saturday, April 30th, 10:00 to 2:00, Tivoli's first annual Arbor Day celebration, and there's events all day. Bring your questions about trees and shrubs, and certified arborist Angelo Shimbari will be here to answer all your questions. be here to answer all your questions, free of charge. And there's going to be a tree walk with Amy Perella, the Horticulture Supervisor at Bard, and she's going to teach us how to identify different trees. There's a poster contest for the kids, and we'll have the materials for them to use. And a presentation by Jeff Urban, the King of Compost.
The Sultan of Saad.
And this is the launch of the Tivoli Memorial Tree Program with an address by our mayor, Joel Griffith, and Solarized Northern Duchess and Illegal Women Voters, and many others will have booths. Friday, May 6th, 6:00 p.m., is a program called Cuba, It's Music and History, where musicologist and Tivoli resident Ken McCarthy, who recently spent 10 days in Cuba, touring the island with a group of musicians, academics, and music producers, will talk and share what he saw and heard. And save the date, the first canoe paddle with the DEC is June 9th at 4:00, and you can go on the DEC website to register for that. There is no hunting going on right now, so when you're in the bay, just watch out for ticks. There's going to be a teen horror club starting on Fridays, beginning in May, Fridays, 7:00 p.m. in the library, and this is being funded with a grant from the Stewart's Foundation. He's maybe showing the teenager, yeah. Just dress him.
Go on a mask, they won't know.
There you go. Just dress him, yes. In terms of historic resources, on May 7th, at the Reinbeck Fairgrounds, Historic Red Hook is partnering with the Hudson River Valley Antique Auto Association, and they've put together a collection of rare memorabilia, colorful cars, and equally colorful veteran drivers from the golden age of stock car racing at the Reinbeck Speedway, which operated between 1940s and the 1960s. And the admission to the exhibit is included with the entry fee for the car show. That's kind of, kind of cool. Finally, May 7th, 9:00 to noon, come clean up Tivoli Bay, come to the canoe launch, bring a canoe, bring a kayak, bring your work gloves. If you don't have a boat, that's okay, just wear boots, and you can slog along the shore. This is part of the fifth annual Hudson River Sweep that Riverkeeper puts on, and it's going to be great. We'll haul out lots of garbage and have a good time doing it. Done.
Great.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, Major. Well, I already said a lot, a little while ago, but I do want to mention, we had a really great community garden workday last Saturday. We got five more raised beds built, and this is the first year that we have filled every plot. In fact, the center plot that had been the sort of tool storage, we made that a actual plot. And so, you know, we're finally at that point where it's going to be waiting less than lottery next year, perhaps. I want to tell all those gardeners, bring in your fees, because even though we got the beds built, we are not going to get the soil until everyone has brought in their money. So pay up. Also, this weekend, I want to let the board know that the painting and repairs to the walls in the clerk's office will begin this weekend. We're going to test our colors tomorrow, I think, and it's going to look great. It's going to be really nice. Also, as I mentioned during the State of the Village, there are two new committees that have been formed in the village, the Tree Committee and the Committee for the Promotion and Preservation of Tivoli History. So if you're interested, contact me, you can call the clerk's office, 757-2021, and we'd love to have you come on and help. They're going to be really fun committees, and they're going to do some fun stuff.
And I learned a fun fact tonight, and that is that Margaret Lemon is Claude Potts' cousin.
You didn't know that?
I didn't.
I learned it from Margaret herself.
And the last thing I want to mention, our next Tivoli Community Day will be August 6th in the park with a rain date on the 13th, but it's not going to rain, I don't think. With that, does the board have any other business? Are there any comments from the public?
Of course, a lot of it's staying around back. No, just want to let you know that we're closing out that, hopefully, close out that grant that we got for $132,000 in the turnout here within the next week or so. It's been a nightmare with vendors, incorrect orders and stuff like that. The chief has been going nuts with that thing. Just so that you're aware, what's going on is, we have to get that closed out before they will even look at us for another grant. Again, we did put in for another grant for $60,000 for two draws. We passed the review so far. We haven't got any denial letters, so I guess we're in a running. We just have to close out that other grant because they won't give us the other grant until...
Okay.
It's looking good, so we'll keep our fingers...
Best of luck, yes. Fingers crossed.
Congratulations, yeah.
So we'll see what happens.
Any other comments from the public? All right, seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have 8:56, and we are adjourned. Thank you.